I call to order the meeting of September 30th. Happy New Year for those interested. Will you all please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
My Pledge of Legions is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, justice, law, and law.
And do we have Spanish translation tonight?
We do. We have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight. Vivian?
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Gracias. And we have headsets for the hearing impaired. Do I hear a motion on donations?
Move to approve with appreciation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? No passes five zero. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Board members at our last meeting, I told you about three outstanding students. Oh, did I just turn it off?
Okay. How's that? I told you about three outstanding students last week. Angela Day, Caroline Kinn, and John Kim. They are with us tonight. Would you please come forward? On September 21st, these three students won the national qualifying Yao High School Mathematics Awards Competition in San Gabriel. Here we go. Just stand right here, please. When they presented their own original research in the field of linear algebra. Professor Yao, by the way, is a famous mathematician. These outstanding math students won the national qualifying competition in their category and will be headed to China in late October to compete in the international competition. These students have been Dos Pueblos High School Math Club officers and have been in Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy for four years. Caroline and Angela. This is Caroline and this is Angela, right here. Caroline and Angela were on the LA Capital Markets Contest Team together last year where they took second place. And Angie was on the Economics Challenge Team as well. John and Angie are both varsity tennis players and Caroline was on the JV Swim Team for three years. Congratulations, Angela, Caroline, and John.
We are so proud of our students. I bet we have some proud parents here as well.
Can we give you applause, too?
Best of luck to you all.
I think this is the first time that we've had students win a competition and become eligible for an international competition. I don't know that this has ever. It may have happened, not in my memory. So congratulations, that's quite an achievement. And I would say enjoy your trip to China, but probably you'll be nervous for the first part of it. So enjoy it after the competition.
And the other recognition we have tonight is that we have a number of board candidates with us tonight. We have Kate Smith, we have Ed Herron, oh, there's Jackie Inda, we have Charlotte Ware, and in the back we have. There's Susan Deacon, right there. We also have Annette Cordero, who is here at the dais. Good.
The superintendent's report?
We are now in our sixth week of school. Back-to-school nights were a big success. Our first Measure V Bond Oversight Committee meeting is tomorrow night. Our official state Seabeds enrollment count is coming up this next Wednesday. Our schools are focusing on education. For all the talk about budgets, about facilities, staffing, nutrition, our core mission is instruction and learning, and it is a mission that we need to stay focused on. I'm meeting with our schools to emphasize that mission and to discuss how to increase learning and achievement, particularly for our English learners. We still have a sizable achievement gap in this district, and we are determined to change that. We have some wonderful performances coming up in the weeks ahead. At San Marcos High School, we have the choir concert that will take place tomorrow at seven o'clock in the auditorium. Galita Valley Junior High's advanced band will play at the October 17 Dos Pueblos football game. How about that? That's a good switch. And we have a number of performances at our high schools and junior highs in the months to come. San Marcos High will present the Comedy of Errors on November 13, 14, 15. Santa Barbara Junior High's fall play will be Inherit the Wind on November 21st and 22nd. Galita Valley Junior High's Performing Arts Class will present Got Broadway on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Finally, we recently read a news article contending that El Puente Community School is a poisonous site by someone calling himself the investigator. El Puente is not one of our schools but does serve students in our community. I investigated the complaint a month ago and learned that the site has been tested a number of times by the California Department of Toxic Substances Control, an agency under the umbrella of the California Environmental Protection Agency, and poses no health hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're up to public comments.
Why don't you come under public comment? This is an interesting. Because we do have public comments.
We have public comments. Wait a minute. We haven't called you. She's going to call people. We have a lot of people in front of you.
We did, no, but the issue here.
I'm not speaking at public comment. I'm speaking on the superintendent's report, which is a separate agenda item. I have separate comment under public comment. There's public comment on each agenda item.
It's not an agenda item, is it?
Yeah, it is. It is on the agenda and it is an item. It has its own separate designation.
We've taken a public comment on the superintendent's report.
Go ahead.
All right, so you have three minutes, and I will give you a 30-second warning.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sarvis is wrong. I have seen the same reports for El Puente, and the long-term health hazards have not been determined yet. Are you saying that they have been? Mr. Sarvis, you've seen those reports. Is that what you're saying? The long-term health hazards have been determined for those chemicals, those toxic chemicals that are in that site? Because I've seen those reports. It's not true what you just said, Mr. Sarvis. And I really don't appreciate your attempt to, again, whitewash something going on in this district that's harmful to kids. Are you saying that the long-term effects have been established, Mr. Sarvis?
We actually don't have.
This is not a discussion, however, I am quoting from the letter you received.
Yes, and so am I. The short-term effects, which mean hours to days, have been determined, the immediate effects have been determined not to be harmful, but the students are not there for just hours to days. They're there for months to years. And I currently have a letter into the Department of Toxic Substances asking how they can say that it's, that there's not, the students there are safe from immediate harm when they've been there that long in the first place. It's absurd. But the letter does specifically say the long-term health effects have not been determined, and they need further testing. You saw that yourself, Mr. Sarvis.
I would also add that DTSC was asked whether they would approve a new building on the site, a new school building on the site, and they said yes, they would.
Yeah, and you just saw in the newspaper about a month ago where DTSC has also approved a school in Los Angeles on the site of a former oil well where they have to, they have to burn off the gas off of towers. So, you know, we'll just see.
That was long ago. I think the discussion is over.
They just approved it. So we'll just see how safe this site is, Mr. Sarvis. You have no reason to say that there is no risk there.
Kate Smith?
Mr. Sarvis, after Kathleen Abney, the head of La Cuesta, said that the students are all special needs and there are not special needs personnel at the schools, I said this is non-compliance to IDEA and ADA.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is not, this was not brought up in the superintendent's report.
Okay, well then.
Speak to El Puente, which was.
There was a time he said the district was compliant. And now you are using your time to lie to the people. I want to tell you, Superintendent Sarvis, the words that I am known to have said at the end of an independent article. I am not a threat to your life. I'm a very real threat to your livelihood.
Ms. Smith, this is not related to the superintendent's report.
Yes, it is. I am responding to his words.
Not as part of his superintendent's report.
I really don't know what you're talking about.
His words said that it is a safe, public school. This is a lie to the people, and the people are not going to stand for this anymore. Thank you.
I think we need to stop. Mr. Sarvis, the LISA agents have disclosed to the Lisi the presence of contamination in soils and underground beneath the premises.
Further, the Lisi demanded from Bill Saroni to be indemnification against any liability arising from the presence of hazardous substances. I don't think anyone on this board or in this room would allow this district to send their child to El Puente, because I certainly, I have had cancer myself, so I'm very careful what places I go to have any kind of scent of toxic substances. Not one member of this board would have their child in El Puente, and it is disgusting, this cover-up.
Now we're on public comments. First up, we have Kate Smith.
Kate made copies, so the board has it.
Members of the Santa Barbara School Board of Education, truth comes as a conqueror only to those who have lost the art of welcoming it as a friend. Rabindra Thagore. I am wearing my Tai Chi uniform, which you have seen many times, instead of my coat of many colors. It says Lau Kundo, and it translates from the English, from the Chinese to the English as "the way of the flowing fist." When we etiquette to our Tai Chi master, this is war and this is peace. Tonight, I come as truth that confronts humorless arrogance, illusory prestige, brute force, and primeval stupidity. You are elected by the people of the people to watch over our children, the very future of our democratic society, to safeguard their rights, to promote their defense, and to assure justice, and that the school system educates our children in a democratic way, with democratic principles, democratic programs, democratic policies, and democratic practices. You have been derelict in your duty. You have turned a blind ear to our complaints, a deaf ear to our complaints, and a blind eye to our outrage and our tears. I am here now to call you to expel corruption and to restore justice in our school system. The school-to-prison pipeline pushes struggling in-school students out of education into jail schools operated by the juvenile justice system. The school-politico-industrial complex is an unholy.
30 seconds.
Alliance of schools, law enforcement, and 47 nonprofit agencies, and Laguna Industrial Partners. Bill Levy, the most notorious developer in Santa Barbara. It feeds off government monies meant to educate and nurture our children's minds, bodies, and spirits.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
The rest of my speech is written in a letter that I will read on radio October 1st tomorrow at 11 o'clock AM, channel 1290.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead, because we have four more speakers. I'm going to call out your names, so you know who's following whom. We have Joan Esposito, followed by Richard Foster, followed by Kenneth Locke. So Ms. Esposito.
I'm under no illusion that you enjoy seeing me. And believe me, I don't enjoy coming. Every time, for 19 years, I've come in front of the Santa Barbara School Boards, I don't like coming here. But every now and again, a child walks through my door, and I have no choice but to come in front of you. I've been advocating with students in your district with disabilities for 19 years. Every time I get a new case, I tell people, these cases can't get any worse. But I'm always proven wrong. Last year, this district sent a student from the junior high school into El Puente because his grades were too low to graduate. The boy has dyslexia and several other learning disabilities. Student didn't have behavior problems. You sent him there for the summer program to raise his grades. Legally, he should have had a private tutor, if the mother had money to hire an attorney. While he was at El Puente, he was brutally attacked by a classroom aide, thrown to the ground, his arms pulled behind his back, and his forehead banged on the floor. But you know what? That was just another Hispanic student, whose parents couldn't afford to hire an attorney. And she couldn't also, didn't have the money to file a lawsuit against this district or the county office of education. Your district and the county office of education has recently been found out of compliance on this case by the state department of education. How far it will go, I don't know. We'll see. But just when I thought that when this district could not sink any lower, last week, a young boy and his mother came into our center, begging me to help them. Your staff is in the process of expelling this young student to El Puente, and I'm trying very hard, and I've been trying for six days now, to stop it. This young man was found with marijuana in his pocket in school, and the principal has threatened to expel him, and she's refused to look at his horrendous health issues. He was diagnosed with thyroid cancer two years ago. He had nine modules removed from his vocal cords. His thyroid has been removed. He currently has a cancerous nodule around the other vocal cord, and he has cancer nodules on his chest. He receives non-localized radiation to address his different cancers. Last Friday, I went into what was supposed to be a manifestation determination meeting. Actually, I didn't know what the meeting was, because the mother had never received a notice.
30 seconds.
I handed the principal letter. Is it timed?
Oh, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. Well, I think, I think in this case, you need to give me some extra time. I handed the principal letter from the student's doctor, hoping she changed her mind about the expulsion. But she didn't. She said he had another infraction like this two years ago. Well, the infraction two years ago where he smoked marijuana was the day before he was, he was given his diagnosis of thyroid cancer. The letter from the doctor, which I gave the principal Friday, states, "This young man was diagnosed at age 15 with thyroid cancer. He is now 17 years old and continues to suffer the effects of his surgical procedures and chemotherapy."
Ms. Esposito, are you lined yet?
No, I haven't finished. She suffers from chronic pain.
Madam President, we have the tradition here that if a board member would like to hear someone finish on a point of this gravity, that.
Well, and I also.
I would request that we give her the time.
I think Ms. Parker was about to say something. Well, what I would appreciate is getting this written, and I hope that you made, or you can give a copy to the superintendent, so that we can have a copy of it.
Oh, yeah. I will give you a written copy. I'll have to correct this one, because it's all got spelling mistakes on it. I started a while ago. Thank you. Thank you. He continues to suffer the effects of his surgical procedures and chemotherapy. He suffers from chronic pain for which he receives ongoing treatment. His cancer is not completely in remission, and he experiences extreme emotional issues given his diagnosis and prognosis. He has been referred to the hospice of Santa Barbara for counseling and has just begun one-on-one therapy. The principal hadn't changed her mind, even when I gave her the letter from the doctor. The expulsion process is still on track. It has been delayed, but only because I went in on Friday and took on this case. This student is a well-behaved student. He wants to do well in school. He, all he wants to do is graduate with his peers. He's not involved in gangs. He has no behavior problems. And the principal is attempting to expel this student for possession of marijuana, a behavior clearly related to the stress of his chronic, chronic pain problems. The expulsion process is being performed without giving this student the rights guaranteed to him under the Americans with Disabilities Act for law. You know, I know this is going to take a long process with this student. I have already started raising funds in the community, and this Sunday, someone came forward and gave me money for a computer, a laptop computer, so he can take it to the cancer center with him, so he can use it. He has been on home hospital for two years, two hours a day. He should have been given a laptop computer and given him programs where he could, you know, learn how to read, learn how to write, learn how to comprehend. He's a special education student. This is the most disgusting case I have ever come across in my entire career in this field. And I'm asking this board to look into this. I do not want this boy to go in front of five, five of your principals in an expulsion process. His health can't take it. He is seriously ill. It is disgusting what you are doing. If I hadn't entered this case, he would have been in El Puente in a couple of weeks in a toxic environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard Foster, followed by Kenneth Locke, followed by Carolyn Renard.
Good evening. My name is Richard Foster, and I oppose Measure H. In a Newshawk, Newshawk Commentary dated September 18th, Santa Barbara School Board Member Laura Malakoff wrote a well-written piece on Measure H. She said, quote, "Measure H 2008 funds will also provide for critical supplements in math and science education, along with additional classes in technology, foreign languages. Ninth-grade math classes can again have 20 students, maximum of 20 students, and our junior high schools will receive much-needed support for their music and theater arts program. These enhancements will provide the competitive edge our students need to succeed beyond high school." Like Mark Twain's War Prayer, this article has an unspoken message. Why should we vote for Measure H when this article makes it clear that this school district holds academic education in such low esteem that critical supplements are funded last? Why do we have a parcel, why don't we have a parcel tax for administrative pay increases or to fund new administrative positions? Why not a parcel tax to pay utility bills for increasing nighttime activities? Or perhaps a parcel tax to pay for the increased cost of building 35- and 50-meter pools? Why not have a parcel tax to pay for gang liaisons? But no, you have funded all of these items before you funded programs which, quote, "will provide the competitive edge for our students beyond high school." In the last few months, I've seen thousands of dollars approved to pay for lease payments on portable classrooms that were supposed to be replaced by Measure V, but they were not. It was reported there was a $30,000 increase for security and ambulance services at sporting events. Now you've approved $90,000 for gang liaisons, and Dr. Sarvis requested almost $400,000. But you won't give budget priority to, quote, "much-needed support" to the music, arts, and theater programs. The public must ask themselves, given your lack of priority for education, how can we reasonably expect to see this money spent as promised? After all, when you had to decide between moving forward and replacing aging portable classrooms as promised, or build new swimming pools, which you can't seem to operate now without cutting academic programs, you voted against the educational facility improvement. Now you tell the public that if we just give you a little more money, I'm sorry, you will use the money wisely. However, at the June 24th board meeting, Dr. Sarvis was honest enough to warn this board that though you will pick the areas of emphasis. You will not decide how the parcel tax is spent. Put education first, then ask the public for money. Don't make critical programs your last and lowest priorities. Start keeping your word to the community when you make promises, then we might be able to trust that you will deliver what was promised. Show better prudence in how you spend money. When the superintendent's salary has risen 7% per year for, every year for the last eight years, one, the public has to, the public has to look askance when you cry poor to the teachers and to the students. The public should vote no on H and all parcel taxes until we see fundamental change in the way this district does business. You are not the Public Rec. Department, you are not the Police Department, you are not the Social Welfare Department, you're the Board of Education. Put education first, and then we may embrace your parcel tax. Personally, I would support a parcel tax to maintain pool activities or whatever, because they are beautiful pools. They weren't what you told us I would build. But why is education the last thing we're financing? Thank you.
Kenneth Locke?
I think I should clarify to the board that the Board of Education will have to approve the expenditures, even though there will be a Citizens Watchdog Committee.
Okay, Kenneth Locke, followed by Carolyn Renard.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the city council today and formed them of a video that I did. It's on YouTube. It's called "Art Market and the Required Level of Ignorance." And what I want to prove through this, this video, and maybe I'm going to continue on with other videos, but our art market, again, it requires a level of ignorance for it to stand, to, for it to, to function. And once we break through that, we can actually benefit. But we need to break through this thing that we've continually are ignoring, that, again, just maintains this market. And once we understand the problem, what the problem is, is that the basis for valuing an object of art is not the right way, and not in any way. A person who does not have that understanding will fall into a category of ignorant, and as I mentioned to the city council, there's, there's also this level of stupidity. And I mentioned, I think I mentioned to them, the difference between the, those two classes is based on the fact that the ignorant are intelligent enough to actually make the right choice, but choose not to. And then the stupid will, are just understood as not having the intelligence to actually, to be ignorant. And I'm going to lay all this out, and it should be a no-brainer for those who have some intelligence that actually prove to, to themselves and to me and to everyone that they're able to not be a victim, because we're all being victimized here, the children. When we, this market is interrelated with our mortgage market, and none of our markets actually have anything to build on, and it's already bankrupt. And I'm intelligent enough to understand this. The whole basis of why this, our economy is actually moving is based on a person's ignorance or stupidity. And eventually, we'll come to terms with this and then reboot the computer.
30 seconds.
Reform, reform education. -reform education and correct our economy, because this economy and the educational system is not doing its job. And I'll keep you up to date. Again, the video is called "Art Market and the, let's see, the Level of Ignorance." And if you put that in the search engine, you'll pick it up. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final public comment is Carolyn Renard.
This weekend, I watched the board meeting of the 22nd being televised, and I watched the board's discussion and vote on the gang intervention specialists, and it was so upsetting to me that I felt that I had to come and speak tonight. And I'm requesting that this appalling issue be placed on the agenda for the next meeting, these specialist positions. The board didn't vote on even a job description. The board voted on, the board's vote was so convoluted in the first place that it's extremely difficult to understand. But they basically voted to give Mr. Sarvis a blank check to continue criminalizing the students in your district. For one thing, and I'm just going to go over this briefly because it needs a full discussion, the attachment that the district gave with this agenda item. At the beginning of the description of these gang intervention specialist positions, it says that they will focus on youth who are or have been identified as potential gang members. Then, we have a bait and switch here. You go to the second page, and then all of a sudden, it switches to program goals. The purpose of the outreach worker, this gang intervention specialist, is to build a relationship with youth who are at risk of gang involvement. Suddenly, it switches from kids who are in gangs, and as Mr. Sarvis keeps saying, "We must do something now," that was his refrain, because, you know, we have things going on in the community. So, on the first page, it's, "Oh, we're just focusing on the kids who are in the gang." On the second page, it's kids who are at risk of gang involvement. Well, there's no definition of who is at risk of gang involvement, and this is how kids are criminalized. You know, who is to say who is at risk of gang involvement? It's probably, number one, going to be a Hispanic kid. What criteria is the district going to use? The usual, it's a Hispanic male in high school who is having trouble in school and isn't doing well academically and is bringing down their No Child Left Behind scores? You know, well, it sounds like an at-risk-of-gang-involvement. And since there's no definition of that, and this board has approved and gone along once again with Mr. Sarvis's little incremental school-to-prison pipeline, so that's just one of the things in this attachment here. And U.S. Department of Justice studies have shown that there is considerable risk in the over-identification of youth as-
Thirty seconds.
...at risk of gang involvement. Being so identified, they begin to identify as such themselves, they are at much greater risk of criminalization. About a year ago, Superintendent of County Schools Bill Cerrone got more probation officers in the schools with Justice Department funds. Several months ago, the Serious Habitual Offender Program, Mr. Sarvis pushed through because it was such an emergency, claiming that he was going to come back and clarify the program later. Well, he never has. It's been months. And now, he said he was going to put on this agenda, a clarification of this position, this gang intervention specialist, and no, it's not on the agenda. And is this board really keeping track of things and overseeing Mr. Sarvis? No, they're not. They're going along with anything he wants, with the exception of-
Are you finishing up?
-Mr. Noel, who's at least trying to do something.
Thank you. And that concludes public comments. Okay, consent agenda. I'd like to pull B1. Is there anything, anyone else? Otherwise, can I have? Oh, by the way, B4 and B8 are exactly the same.
I was just going to say, okay. So, why don't we-
Let's eliminate B8.
Okay, eliminate B8, and I will move to approve the consent agenda-
Second.
...with the exception of items?
B4, B11, and B16.
B4.
If you want to eliminate one of those, please eliminate B4-
Oh, okay.
...because of the titling on B8.
So-
Then I want to pull B8.
Okay.
B11 and 16?
Eight, 11, and 16 for me. Thank you.
Eight, 11, and 16. Okay.
Oh, okay. So, we have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes 5-0. Okay, C1. Approval for funding for the California School Boards Association training for school board members.
I suspect it's pretty self-evident. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, it's four with one abstention. Dr. Noel.
That's about the content of the training, not about the principle of having well-trained board.
D1. Did I miss something, or am I right? Yeah, D1. As you'll notice, in the packet is the evaluation form that we used last year, and if you would pull it out and go through it, and if you have any comments or any changes or anything like that, that I'm asking you to just give it back to me at some point. The next, I'll give you a couple of weeks, actually. Two weeks is fine. And so, before then, around the time of the next meeting, if you'll just give it back to me with your suggestions, comments, and I will work with that to come up with another draft. Any questions about that? Okay, then we can go on to D2. We were working this through. I believe not all the board members were here when we started this. We were up to page 17. So, if anybody that wasn't here, or anyone that was and has anything else to say, wants to discuss pages 1 through 16, I could go back, but I really want to go ahead, but-
I just have one request to make, and that is, because it is such a long document, that any punctuation or grammar changes that people forward to, is it-
Barbara Kehoney.
Ms. Kehoney, are you keeping the master for the-
Yes.
Okay.
The 5,000.
I'm just requesting of my fellow board members that they send to you any grammatical changes or, you know, punctuation changes, rather than having to go through them in open session, so that we deal with content as opposed to-
Good idea. And plus, I want to say at the very beginning that we have an 8:30 for certain end to this. I'm sorry, is it? I thought it was 8:30. Ah, where are we?
Well, the next agenda item is slated for 8:30. But we do have to go into closed session at 9:30.
Yeah. So, that was to give us enough time to go through everything else, so we can go into closed session at 9:30. So, we have 50 minutes. Let's, okay. We're back to the pages 1 through 16. Does anyone have any other comments before we go back? Otherwise, we'll go forward. We're talking, so the public knows, I'll try to say a little bit about what we're talking about here. We're on to District Residency, then on page 17. And that continues on through to, we have, oh, it keeps going, doesn't it? Non-resident foreign students on page 24.
Are you asking for comments?
Yes, please stop me, or else I'll keep going.
I just, back on page 17-
Page 17, good.
...the District Residency, I was just sort of, a little confused by this whole idea of a student shall be deemed to have complied with District Residency requirements if he or she meets any of the following criteria, and then the list. I mean, to me, they're there, they may be there on an inter-district transfer, but it's not quite the same thing as saying that they've complied with District Residency requirements. And so, that just struck me as a little odd, because they're still, they're not students of residence, they're transfer students. So, for some of them, specifically if they're admitted through the district's inter-district attendance program, and if his parent is physically employed, so for number three, and then that paragraph, "In addition, District Residency status may be granted to a student if the parent is employed." And so, those two in particular really stuck out for me as not necessarily, they're not-
I'm sorry, Ms. Parker, which page are you on?
17.
And you were looking at number three?
Well, I'm looking at the, you know, the top, the introductory sentence, which is-
Yes.
"-a student shall be deemed to have complied with District Residency requirements." And then number three, it struck me as odd that they're inter-district students, but now in this AR, we're saying that they are-
Oh, I see. Okay.
...resident students, even though-
Well, we can easily separate that out.
Well, those two, number three, and then that line about, "In addition, District Residency status may be granted to a student if at least one parent is physically employed." To me, that they should simply be inter-district transfers. So, those were the two that I had questions about.
Anything else in that section between 17 and 26? 25, really. No?
No, mine is on page-
No, mine is on page 29. I thought it was 26.
I'm on 27. I have a comment if no one else, anyone else before that? Yeah, you do.
I do. Just on number one.
27.
A student may be exempted from full-time attendance in the district's regular education program if he or she, number one, is being instructed in a private full-time school, and the district attendance supervisor designee verifies that the private school has filed an affidavit pursuant to ED Code 33190. Are we really doing that for our private school students in the community, and is that truly necessary for us to do?
Because it says ED Code there, as you know, we follow the templates from CSBA, and so that is an ED Code. I have not looked into that specifically. When the ED Codes are cited, we normally just go with them and say, okay. But I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure that that is something we do. If it's ED Code, we need to be doing it.
Something to be looked into.
I have a question on that page also. I don't know if it belongs here, but I understand that in our high schools, that students have to take four consecutive periods, or some, there's some rules about this, that if they're taking a class at Santa Barbara City College, for example, they can't, like, come in the morning to high school, go to City College, and then come back, that they have to be going to school so many periods at once. And I'm just curious where that belongs even, or where that comes from.
I don't remember ever seeing that. Is that what the schools do? Is that it?
Well, it was told to me by the counselor that my son couldn't take a study period, a certain period. You had to have consecutive periods.
Is it an ADA requirement?
I don't know. I just thought something to ask. I don't know.
We could sure look into it.
Just, yeah, okay. I don't know anything else. Okay. Let's see, exclusions from attendance up until, anything to 31?
No, yeah, I had a question on 29.
That's right.
And I think it's just a minor thing. Number four, it says, "May be excluded from attendance in the district," and most of these are issues where they might have a communicable disease. Number four says, "Are infected with any contagious infectious disease?" And I was wondering, is there a list of what would be considered infectious diseases, or could that be literally anything that might be contagious? I'm thinking, you know.
I don't know if others, I'm sure some of us have, if you're curious about a particular ED Code and you go online to look at the ED Code, it tends to go through a long list. So, I suspect if you looked up this ED Code, and somebody could probably do it right now if they had a computer, you could see if it lists-
We have a copy of the ED Code right around the corner.
Oh, okay.
Let's just take a look.
And it also references R, you see where it says-
Yes, yes.
Yes, the infectious diseases, 5141.22, and it's right back here. And it talks about some of them, and it lists quite a few as far as the ED Code, smallpox and such.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
And they do apply them to that specific board policy when they look at excusing a student from school for that.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that there was a finite list.
Okay. We're, let's see, we're on to 29, so up to anything before, between that and 33. Anybody? 34, 35, or into absences and excuses. And on page 36, I think I have another question there. It says, no, I don't, I'm not sure I understand all my notes here, but student absences, this is three, almost near the bottom, student absence for religious instruction, maybe considered excused subject of law. And then you go to page 205, and it says, boy, did I find this later five, on page 205 of this document, that at the beginning of each year, a board has to adopt a resolution allowing such absences. I don't remember any resolution, just a question mark there. Do you see that in the middle of page 205?
I don't think we have to adopt it annually. That's just, parents have to be notified annually that they could do that.
Just needs to occur annually. It wasn't my understanding that there needs to be a resolution that has to be made annually. It's in that packet that goes home at the very beginning of the year. All these things that are listed as annual are the stuff that comes home in that packet.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
I just, can I go back one page?
Please.
Where it, the second paragraph on page 35, it's under open-closed campus, and it says, blah, 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 "Shall not be liable for the conduct and safety of students who leave school grounds during the lunch period." And I'm assuming when principals send notifications home about open and closed campus, that they also alert parents that we are not responsible for what occurs if their child chooses to leave campus?
That's a good point. I don't remember seeing that on the thing that I signed.
I don't think I've ever seen it on a form that I've signed, yeah.
Good point.
Okay.
Yeah. It's also, I had a question of, a student asked me about leaving campus, whether certain rules apply when they're off-campus, like not using their cellphone. And I can't imagine that we can actually enforce that.
And they didn't realize that that's why you leave-
The campus. Well, what I heard was that all the juniors and seniors have a tendency to leave the campus so they can, they cross the street just to use their cellphone and then come back. I don't know. I'm just putting that out there. Okay, so now 37, 38.
I had a question regarding 38, which had to do with how we defined immediate family, because in my reading of this, I thought this was applying to students. So, I was wondering why we're including sons and daughters-in-law. None of our students would have sons or daughters-in-law. And that's on page 38, number four, how it defines immediate family.
Well, it could be that they're going to, maybe they're-
It seemed to me that it would be more likely to say brother or sister-in-law.
Let me see what you're saying.
That seems like that might apply more to staff rather than to students.
Why don't we look at the ED Code reference on that?
Make sure if it's absolutely correct in the wording.
Also, I don't see on here anything about if a student is in police custody or something like that. Yeah, it's close, but not-
By the way, the son, son-in-law is directly out of the ED Code. Members of the immediate family are defined in ED Code as mother, father, grandmother, grandfather, or grandchild of the employee or spouse or employee.
Yeah, and so I'm saying, that applies to the employee. Is there ED Code regarding students?
The ED Code can be wrong.
Sometimes it doesn't apply to students, but we take the language for the employees and try to morph it to the students.
Yes.
So, we could just change that to brother, brother-in-law and sister-in-law.
Change it to something that makes sense to us. Good.
Okay, anything else? Boy, how about a car accident on the way to school? I actually wrote that. Is that an excused absence? I don't know. Okay. Anything else on that page? On truancy on 41, truancy goes all the way up- Um, on truancy on forty-one, truancy goes all the way up until forty-six.
Now, in our notes, it said these will be considered at a future meeting. Did that apply? I mean, we're, what, I took that to mean that we weren't considering them tonight. Is that correct or not?
That's correct. All of those that were pulled or indicated in that fashion. Um, Michael Gonzalez is relooking at all of that in regards to some of the other things we're working on, truancy program in particular here.
Work permits forty-seven. Up to fifty-two. Uh, school attendance boundaries.
I had some notes on that one.
Okay.
Um, this list is pretty different from the old list for school attendance boundaries. My suggestion would be to add a new one in between the existing one and two on this list. Number one, it says school enrollment data, including linguistic enrollment patterns. I would personally suggest that we add in, when we're reviewing school attendance boundaries, socioeconomic, linguistic, and other demographic factors. And then I would also suggest simply eliminating the community and neighborhood identity line for number eight because we're already looking at the, um, at community input in number five. And feeder patterns and. I don't know if other board members have any comments on those.
I, well, I, I would prefer to keep number eight. I think it's different than just community input. The identity of the neighborhood, um, in terms of the, it could be the, how the, the parameters of what the commu- the neighborhood identifies as the neighborhood boundaries. Um, and I think that, I read that differently as commu- than community input, which might have more to do with, well, it could touch on this, but it could also be about other things. And I would want to make sure that that one is still there.
Yes, it is.
That's correct.
That's right.
Okay, then, so we're up to.
Yes, yes. Right. And we have suggestions for, right. We have suggestions for that and it's being put together and then sent out to principals. And once we get that back, then we'll get it back to the board in a board brief first, so there's time to look over it and it'll come back to the board.
So can I ask you a quick question? Should, then, we are going to get new copies of these that are revised, or should we hang on to these?
No, you will get new copies of these that are revised and it will show the revisions.
Okay, thank you.
Did you know page seventy-one is actually part that should be pulled, that the expelled? I believe that's part of the, part that's pulled out for expulsions that Michael Gonzalez is looking at.
So is.
Oh, is that, is that correct? Okay.
Yes, that one page.
We did not note that in the agenda, so we will bring this back then as well.
Okay, so seventy-two now. Seventy-two.
That's still part of that. Seventy-one and seventy-two.
Okay, okay, okay. Cause I have a whole list. We're on seventy-three.
I, I actually have a comment on page seventy-three and it's not that I object to what's there, but I actually think that more should be included from the ed code. In the second paragraph, it says, "The teacher of each course shall determine the student's grade. The grade assigned by the teacher shall not be changed by the board or superintendent except as provided by law, board policy, and administrative regulation." And what the, um, the ed code says is, uh, that the governing board of the school district and the superintendent shall not order pupils' grade to be changed unless the teacher who determines such grade is, to the extent practicable, given an opportunity to state orally and writing, et cetera, et cetera. But, uh, the precedent to that is, it says that determination, uh, determination of the, uh, the pupil's grade by the teacher in the absence of clerical or mechanical mistake, fraud, bad faith, or incompetency shall be final. And I'm not sure whether this language expresses that authority, if you will, that the teacher has and the limited opportunity in which to make a plea elsewhere to have a student's grade changed. And I'd be shocked if I was the only board member who had not received a phone call from a parent complaining about a student grade. So I would really like to see that authority expressed, uh, in our, um.
May I address that?
Yeah.
We're well aware of the ed code language on this one and, uh, it would be fine with us. In fact, we would appreciate including more of the ed code language.
Could we, could we stop after, except as provided by law?
You could, or you could simply add more of the, it's, it's not a lot of language in, that's in the ed code that would be included.
I, I would go with either one. In fact, I probably would prefer that in order to make it more explicit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Later in the page, it says, um, "Students in grade K-three may receive narrative evaluations rather than letter grades." Is that the teacher's decision or is that, I mean, are the principal's decision? Who decides whether it's a?
In the case of our district right now, it's, it's a school-wide, um, form of evaluation and reporting. In our open alternative school, all of the report cards are done that way. Um, in the K-three grades, we, we now have our standards-based, uh, report cards. So they're given a proficiency level from one to three and there are narrative comments, but not narrative grades, like a portfolio kind of.
So then it is, is the teacher's decision whether they receive narrative in some cases.
In some cases, right. It's very standard to put comments.
Just to clarify that a little bit, whose decision that is?
And my one other, um, point there is that they do receive numerical grades and not letter grades. So if you could change that.
Yes, that's great. Correct.
Okay. Uh, seventy-four, there's a few, um, yeah.
Oh, you're on seventy-three still?
Uh, well.
There's a few mistakes.
I'm, no, seventy-four, seventy-four.
Yeah, there's a few mistakes there. First, the fill-in number and.
So my question is, what is the number?
We'll find that out for you.
Okay, and now, yeah, I think we're gonna have the same problem here on the, but go ahead, Dr. Noel.
This, in, uh, in browsing around and trying to learn what, what, why some schools are doing a better job than other schools, I ran on to, uh, uh, what one principal called a no D policy. Dr. Harvis and I had a conversation about this. And, uh, and, and that's at Lawndale High School. Lawndale? Yeah, Lawndale. And they, uh, there may be some other variables that work at that school and I wouldn't want to make a, an argument that a single factor accounts for substantial differences in the performance for disadvantaged students, but I'd like, I would love to have a conversation about that kind of an idea. Prior to, you know, anticipating possible policy change or phasing in something, uh, because it really has to do with expectations. And, and that seems to be the key.
I'm intrigued.
Kind of be part of a package of expectations.
I just want you to be more explicit for members of the public. A no D policy means you, that you are tutored to find a way to get you to pass or you just failed the course outright and must repeat it. That a D is not, does not exist so that it does, there's.
They don't give Ds.
As one professor of mine called a D, a, an F washed over by the milk of human kindness. But just to eliminate that possibility. That's what you're talking about. Okay.
And, and I really want to stress, it has to do with, you know, the, you know, we all talk, we all talk the talk of high expectations, but how do you implement high expectations? And, uh, and, and as I say, that, in the context of other specific things to raise expectations, this may make some sense and I would like to, to hear it.
I will put it on my.
A conversation about that.
Sounds interesting.
Maybe, maybe, uh, maybe Dr. Harvis, you, had you, you had talked about that before or heard about it?
Well, we've seen that in schools like Adelaide Stevenson High School where they say, why waste everyone's time by giving anyone a D? You, you identify the students as they're failing early, uh, you provide intervention and you would not, uh, you would not give credit, give five units of credit for a student who learned that little amount, so.
Well, and that's utterly crucial.
No D on a school-wide basis.
Anything that tightens up like that has to be accompanied with, with an early, early detection system to spot the kids who are having trouble and get them the help.
Yes.
So that it's not, it doesn't become just a, another barrier for kids who can't get over the barriers in the first place.
Okay, is there anything else on?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, please.
Yeah, on page seventy-four, um, it talks about, uh, superintendent designee determines the methodology of GPA, determining, calculating GPAs. And then it goes on to say, um, that extra grade weighting will be assigned for honors courses that are substantially similar in depth, breadth, and rigor to advanced placement course and entry-level college course, blah, blah, blah. But it makes no, uh, provision for calculating a GPA based on a gate class. It says honors class that is like an AP class, but a number of our gate classes, they're, they may be rigorous, but they're not like an AP class. Um, and I'm not suggesting that we get rid of a weighted GPA. I really, uh, I think that would require a very long discussion, um, but it doesn't account for our current practice.
Well, I believe in the AR, we should have a complete listing of the courses that receive weighted GPAs. And we can certainly do that.
Go ahead.
On page seventy-six, can we go there?
Uh, anybody for seventy-five? Then go for seventy-six.
Peer grading. What is, well, I, I know what I think it means, but what does that mean in the context of this policy?
It just speaks to what is a common practice in not, um, a high-stakes assessment, but that students can grade each other's tests when you're given the, uh, some, a lot of, a lot of teachers will like pass around the tests so that another student has a test. Some, oftentimes the names not even on there, it'll be a number or something. And then kids correct them and then they go back. But it would never be something that's like a final or something to that extent. Exactly.
Well, I think this needs to say what you just said, in about five, in about five words.
Okay.
Not in high-stakes tests.
Okay.
And the other thing that I would like to add there, where it says at their discretion, and what I would, I would hope to add is at their discretion and with sensitivity, because there are, you know, I certainly know at the elementary level situations where they're passing around the spelling test and, um, some kids are absolutely mortified. You know, their names aren't necessarily taken off of it and it's used as sort of a peer learning opportunity. It just does not work well with some children and so teachers need to be sensitive to that.
Okay.
We, do we, uh, we don't have a policy on group grades, do we?
You mean like in a cooperative setting?
Yeah, cooperative learning, you know, every, you get together in a pod and everybody gets the same grade?
Projects.
I, I don't believe so. I've never seen one.
Neither for nor against group grading.
No.
I'd like to be on record as being against. And I'd be happy to have it be a policy.
I've suffered through that in my life as well.
I'm not sure we should have.
Well, I, oh, in my life, I benefited from it.
I'm not sure we should have a policy about that right now, so we'll.
The other thing, repeating classes and, uh, student may repeat a course in order to raise his or her grade, then both grades get recorded on the transcript. Why do we do that? Why don't we just say, hey, you get the best grade, you took it, you paid the price. Why not get the best grade?
My understanding is, and maybe Davis Hayden can, uh, help me with this, is that we have to have a record of all the classes that the students take. So in most cases, this is a summer school class that they would retake, but we need to have a record of all the classes in which that student was enrolled. And it's, at this point, I mean, the grade would be on there. I, not, not sure why either.
Well, I would be interested to find out more, but my guess is that colleges would require that for transcript purposes.
That could also be the case.
That's how colleges typically record the grades when you get, even if you petition to have your grade changed. It's just, it's changed on your GPA. It's typically not erased from your transcripts.
I, I'm, I'm just, I'd be inclined to say if, if someone goes to trouble and is taking a course over again and raises the grade, that the original record would simply vanish.
Why don't we find out more about that and we'll talk about it?
I have the C in money and banking, that I'm, I'm still trying to get off my record.
Too bad.
Chairman of the Fed, right?
Too bad. We need that information now. Um, anything else on seventy-six, seventy-seven? Uh, seventy-eight, promotion, acceleration, retention. That goes all the way up to eighty-three. Yeah, go.
I had a comment on, just a question really on eighty, cause I, I had not realized that apparently you, you can't retain after first grade. Is that correct?
I believe you can with the discretion. You have to, um, students who have, let's see, where is it? I know that I receive letters and it's specific to the student and I have to approve them. I'm not finding this right here, but somewhere in here I, let's see.
Because it references ed code. It says kindergarten.
In kindergarten?
I'm, I'm looking, where, but first it says continuation in kindergarten, so it explains that you can keep a child for another year in kindergarten. And then it says retention at other grade levels. And it identifies specific levels between grades two and three, three and four, four and five.
That's, that's.
Intermediate.
That is it.
Okay, so you cannot retain after first grade is what it's implying to me.
However, I know that we do that, given that it has to come straight, well, I'm the designee in this case.
Can you check into that?
Yes, I will check.
I remember when the ed code came through and it specifically left that out. I was there.
Do you know why?
Uh, there was a major discussion of it at the time.
Okay, now we have a section on student records, which goes from eighty-four all the way up to, uh, oh, I have a question on ninety-three unless somebody's before me. Anything before ninety-three? We just have the storage, the part about the records and storage, and I don't know if we want to, um, it says, "No charge shall be made to locate or retrieve any student record." I thought we could charge if we had to go into the storage place and go get it or something. It's just a question about that.
We'll look into it.
Okay. Anything else on student records all the way up?
Actually, just to comment with regard to the first item, directory information. It's an issue that has come up in the past that if, page one, I'm sorry, page eighty-six, number one. That if, um, parents wish to put together a school directory, they have to do it through the PTA or PTO. And that they cannot rely on the school for the directory information, they have to solicit that information from individual families. And it says, "Student records do not include directory information." I just not, I'm not sure it's explicit enough.
There's another section on directory information on page ninety-nine, but again, that's also.
Let's look and see what it says.
I, I don't think it reckon, it recognizes that either.
No, this, I'm talking about compiling a student directory. That it is entirely at the discretion of each individual family to release their own particular information.
Yes, I think it makes sense to add that in.
To something other than a school entity.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay, so we have, boy, there's a lot about release of directory information too. But any more on student records, which goes up to page ninety-eight. Otherwise, then we start on release of directory information. Uh, again, on page one oh three, there's some.
Well, I, I'm just looking at one oh one. I'm so horrified at this section actually, and I don't know. and I don't know if this is all ed code. I know that they are required, we are required, for example, to allow military recruiters to have access to certain information unless the parent guardian has not specified, has specified that the information not be released. But even colleges and prospective employers, and we're here talking about, you know, weight and height of athletic team members and, you know. I I just.
Photograph.
Photograph there. Anything beyond sort of name, address, and telephone number seems to me to be excessive, but I don't know what's required by law.
I'm with you. I think we should find out and minimize.
And yet it cites ed code. Yeah.
It does, so.
I would make it as little, make the list as short as possible.
Yeah.
So we'll check to see what's required by ed code and eliminate anything else.
Yeah.
Yes, let's just, yeah.
Strict constructions.
One oh three, there's some, again, some dates that we are supposed to have in there. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Withholding grades, diplomas, or transcripts on page one oh five. Awards for achievement, one oh six, one oh seven.
I actually have a question about one oh five.
Okay.
That if a student, I'm looking down, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph. If student and parent are unable to pay for the damages or return the property, the principal or designee shall provide a program of voluntary work for the student to do. I'm assuming we're not talking about something that maybe the student has vandalized. Are we talking about a lost library book or a lost textbook?
That would be my interpretation. I would have to refer to ed code again to see specifically.
Have we ever done this?
Voluntary work? Yes. I know that's happened at the elementary schools.
Okay.
Can I ask, why are you assuming that it's not vandalism?
Well, it could be, but I also wanted to see if it included something, a more common occurrence like a lost library book or a lost textbook. And then I have a question on page one oh six and segues into page one oh seven. And, you know, pardon my ignorance, but I thought we stopped giving Golden State exams.
The state stopped giving Golden State exams, however, the state Golden Seal Merit Diploma is still available, and it's based on California Standards Test.
Okay.
I don't believe any of our schools actually even pursue it at this point. This last year, in order to encourage higher-level students to do well on the test, we handed out superintendent's certificates, principals' certificates, so we tried to capture all the students that were scoring advanced or higher on a certain number of of California Standards Tests as a as an incentive to get others who are high-level students to achieve.
But you want to change that, because this says that the superintendent shall identify high school students who demonstrated. So that's, are you giving the Golden State Seal Merit Diploma?
Well, this is, this is still ed code language.
They stopped giving Golden State exams in like two thousand and two or three, yeah.
Yes, this is still ed code language, and and it still says that that we should be turning in a list to the state. Now, getting that list from the schools is a problem.
If I can say something here is that we actually do try to identify them, but because of the changing nature of the, we don't give those tests anymore, none of our students ever qualify. So I do make a, I try to make a list. I tried to give Dr. Sarveris a list this year, but there was zero students.
Thank you.
Okay, I had a question on one oh seven regarding the individual awards. Do do we award monetary, do we get monetary awards at our schools? This part that it says individual awards in excess of two hundred dollars must be expressly approved by the Board of Education. And it talked about the committee shall submit recommendations for student awards to a superintendent or designee for approval. I was wondering if any of if that, any of that actually happens.
Well, it depends on what you mean by two hundred dollars. I've never heard of anything like two hundred dollars, but I certainly know that they'll get gift certificates to the boarders.
They're talking specifically about an appointed awards committee at each school.
Yeah, exactly, to get an award.
Right. And I don't know that any of our schools specifically appoint an award committee and then include cash rewards.
Is this something that we just want to delete from this policy?
Well, we could delete it from the policy, however, if if some school decides to give a four hundred dollar award, then I think we want to make sure it comes here first. So I think we want that part of it included.
Well, and then here's the AR on the merit diplomas, too.
I actually think you would want to include the whole thing, because.
Because it's pervasive about you may.
And also, if they were to give an award, you would want to assume that it came through a committee, that it was, you know, a vetted process, that it wasn't someone who was specifically chosen.
I would actually prefer to have a school that wanted to give a cash award like this have to get approval from the board to adopt that kind of a practice.
So make it less than two hundred, make it just any amount.
I mean, I I guess the, I'm thinking about twenty-five dollar, you know, boarders gift certificate or a ten dollar, you know, Starbucks gift certificate or something.
Blenders.
Doesn't seem, blenders, doesn't seem to me like, I mean, I don't want to sort of micromanage down to that level. But I would want the board to have some ability to discuss whether, in fact, we approve the practice of a school awarding, making financial awards and on what basis and, you know, the access that students had to that, et cetera.
No matter what the amount or in excess of two hundred dollars.
Well, I'm I'm grapple, I'm trying to struggle with what I think the amount should be.
It sounds like you would like it to be like a hundred dollars, maybe.
Or it could be, and to me, there's a difference between like cash award, I don't know, cash awards and gift certificates to the bookstore.
Yeah.
At the twenty-five dollar, you know.
I mean, if we awards a student, you know, a hardback dictionary or something, I don't want necessarily that, I don't think that necessarily has to come before the board.
I hope not.
But making some sort of, you know, award, like certainly the two hundred dollars, maybe I would say a hundred.
Well, a decent book costs, many books cost a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks a piece. I would raise it to five hundred. And and it's covered here. It would have to come Board of Education.
You'd say if it's over five hundred, it has to come to us?
Yeah, I would put the threshold at five hundred. That'd give them the ability to buy a nice set of books of some kind as an award. And and then it would come to the board if it's over five hundred.
Well, I'm I'm, okay, that's not my proposal. My proposal is to actually lower the threshold. Because I think if schools are involved in giving monetary awards to students, I would want to know the process by which they're determining how students qualify for that award.
We'll see if there's a specific amount. Normally in ed code, it doesn't give an amount, but it might.
Can we?
It probably says that.
We can always, at a later.
I put in the word value right after the two hundred.
After, when we come back to this, we can vote on the amount, because we may all have different amounts here that we find, but it may be something to come back to.
Excuse me, I have a question. Back on page one oh six, did you want to get rid of that last paragraph? I wasn't clear.
No.
Okay, leave that in.
Yeah, I think so. It just doesn't apply, but that's okay.
Okay.
Right, I think it's ed code that we have to have that.
But then then in the AR, the merit diploma section is, I don't know if any of that's relevant still, so that needs to be addressed.
Oh, right here, yeah, in the middle of one oh seven. Okay, so one, the middle of one oh seven, go back to somehow something there.
Did you want to hear the ed code language on awards?
Yes.
This is four four oh one five. The governing board of a school district may make awards to pupils for excellence. Before any awards are made pursuant to this section, the governing board shall adopt rules and regulations. The board may appoint one or more merit award committees made up of district officers, district employees, or private citizens to consider employee proposals. Now, there's an employee proposal section as well. Special acts, special services, or superior accomplishments, and to act affirmatively or negatively therupon, or to provide appropriate recommendations theron to the board. Any award granted under the provision of this section that may be made by an award committee under appropriate district rules shall not exceed two hundred dollars, which is the part of this which is picked up here, unless a larger award is expressly approved by the governing board. When an awards program is established in a school district pursuant to this section, the governing board shall budget funds for this purpose, but may authorize awards from funds under its control, whether or not budgeted funds have been provided or the funds budgeted are exhausted.
Well, now I know I don't like to read the ed code.
So CSBA has run ahead and structured some awards committee here, I see, that says the superintendent or designee may appoint an awards committee. And the CSBA sample language suggests that it be at each school to consider student accomplishments. I think they just picked up the two hundred dollars out of the ed code.
Okay, so we can't change that.
Well, we we can change it unless a larger award is expressly approved by the governing board.
So it's something for a later decision whether it goes up.
So we can't reduce the threshold, though?
So we can't reduce the threshold. That's right.
Okay. Okay.
Well, you know, the district can always reduce the threshold. We could if we wanted.
Graduation ceremonies and.
One oh eight?
Yep, go ahead.
I just wondered if we could get a report on the experience. The the rule that was passed is that a student who has not completed all the requirements for graduation can nonetheless participate in the graduation ceremony and receive the folder that symbolizes their diploma, even though the requirements haven't been met, if the student is doing the work during the summer. And I just wondered if we have any data, how many students that has have come under that rule and whether they've completed the work in the summer.
Are you speaking specifically to those who have taken the the high school exit exam?
Yeah.
Or?
Speaking of the second paragraph on that, on pages one oh eight.
Are you talking about students who have taken the May version of the exit exam, but they don't get the results until July?
Students who take it in July. Aren't there still students who take it in July?
But this is also about summer school.
Yeah.
So it could be a class that they need to take.
Right, and the superintendent.
It says graduation requirements. Of course, the exit exam is one, but that's not the only one.
We can give you a report. To my knowledge, if students have not completed the graduation requirements, they do not participate in the ceremony, and on the promise of attending a summer school course to complete it, schools regularly say, fine, we'll give you a diploma as soon as you finish it in summer school.
The promise of participating in graduation ceremonies was only offered to students who had fulfilled all of their requirements but had not yet, had taken the May exit exam but did not yet have their results. That was the only exception that was created.
Then this is really not very clear, is it?
Yeah.
Could we, could we sharpen that up?
So graduation ceremonies and activities, anything else?
I I still would be very curious to know how many of them went on to complete that.
I think we, I think there was something in the board briefing.
Yes, we read. We've reported on that in the past. I think it's really quite small, maybe like twenty or so students at each of the high schools that are falling into what I believe you're talking about. It's not a large number.
And and they've all gone ahead and completed the.
No, all of them don't go ahead and complete. I'm saying it's probably.
Some of them got in the graduation ceremony or.
No, I'm not talking about those that get into graduation ceremony. I'm talking about those who are going to summer school or taking the July Casey. There's usually only like twenty or thirty seniors that are doing that type of activity.
I want, I would like to know how many, how that policy has worked out.
I don't know how that's worked out at each school in terms of what the principals have done in terms of allowing those kids to to walk. I don't know what that is.
Because the credibility of the of the diploma is somewhat involved here, and I think. Thank you.
Anything else on conduct, one, ten, and?
Yeah, number nine, seven, I'm sorry, on page one eleven. We were going to be considering at some point in the future a policy on academic integrity.
Ooh, good.
That was something that Michael Gonzalez was also working on. That's correct.
Okay.
And did we, did we address the issue that of five and six, I'm sorry, just five, that laser pointers are pretty much obsolete? Do we still want to maintain that in our policy?
Why are they obsolete? They're still around. They're still around.
They still pose a threat.
I'm sorry, do students still bring them to school? I haven't seen them in a really long time.
No, we don't see them.
Okay.
But they're still around, but.
Okay.
Doesn't hurt.
My one question on that list, it's a pretty, I know it's not limited to, but it's a pretty extensive list, and I'm surprised it doesn't include possession, use, or sale of illegal substances.
Actually, I was just going to say, I was surprised to see this, I believe this whole conducts, conduct piece was also supposed to be pulled. It's part of that, because you noticed the inappropriate attire, all of that. Our current discipline and dress code is not included in this. So this is another part that Michael Gonzalez is working on. So that would be all the way up to page one nineteen should be pulled.
Okay, because there's some options here on one twelve. Okay, one nineteen.
I'm sorry that that didn't.
Because the the electronic device use.
Okay.
It wasn't incorporated. Okay, that makes sense now.
We get to move up here. So we're on one nineteen we talk about. Is anybody administering medication and monitoring health condition?
Actually, I have a suggestion. Page one nineteen through page one sixty involves.
Sixty.
Yep, it goes up to one, page one sixty, involves infectious diseases, asthma management, tuberculosis testing, food allergies, and special dietary diet needs, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be, we would be better, be well-served by having one of our health professionals look at it before it comes back to the board or.
I believe that already happened. We had asked, yes, maybe Ms. Ms. O'Neil.
The Health Department and I have had lengthy discussions in regards to this and have revised this section, and we will provide a copy to Dr. Sarveris in the course at your request.
So so it's revised beyond what we have in our packet, then?
Yeah, on answering medications and monitoring health conditions, yeah.
So we need to see the updated.
Okay, I.
I'm sorry, I thought those revisions made it into this.
Did also.
We'll bring them to you.
Bring all that back then.
Because I, I had some comments.
So then are we going to pull everything up to page one sixty?
Including up, yes.
Okay.
Exactly. Head lice.
How extensive was that?
And there's not grave revisions done in regards to head lice. We did review the AMA requirements. We also did review all the board policies, and we did come up with an amended or add revisions that would increase a student's ability to attend schools while we monitor and control that particular health issue. So there are, there are a few, but they are not many, but they are, we thought that they were worthy to bring before. So we, I will provide that information.
And I just have one other comment on something that's not here, and I think kind of maybe falls in this section. I'm not really sure if you consider it health, but somewhere in the five thousands, and and that's swimming. All of our high schools have pools on them, and often swimming is part of the PE program. And I, we don't have any sort of board policy on students, like if they have to pass a swimming test so that they can use the pool.
I think if I can clarify, I think swimming is only offered as a PE option at Santa Barbara High School.
Mm-hmm. So, but nevertheless, kids could go into a pool, so it just, it seems like some information we need.
Also at Dos Pueblos, no.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it just seems like something that we would need information on, that students need to report if they're, if they can swim or can't swim or something.
And that should actually go into our next series.
In the six thousand series?
Where we identify, we identify student instruction.
But I wasn't sure if it was health-related or instruction-related, so that's a question.
We'll check where that would be, if it's in there or not. Make sure it's not left out.
Okay, so we're going to come back to that section. So we're on page. Okay, uh, so, we're gonna come back to that section, so we're on page one sixty-one, and I hate to say this, but it is a thirty. Um, we did pretty well. Do we can pat ourselves on the back?
Can I ask a question about one ninety-one? Quick, while you're deciding.
Go for it, go. Now, everybody's gonna have a question for me.
Do we use drug sniffing dogs at night around the lockers in our high schools?
We've authorized use of dogs, but um, I'm not aware of any. Uh, I've authorized them, the use of them on an incident basis.
On what?
Incident basis where we have probable cause and.
Yeah, okay.
I thought we had something with weapon detection dogs or something like that.
Those were those knife sniffing dogs.
Knife sniffing, which I cannot imagine, but that they, no, there was such thing?
They sniff drugs and there's a correlation between drugs and?
Oh, I thought I read something about this, okay.
There's no knife sniffing dogs.
Dogs. Okay. So, we're on one sixty-one, we're gonna come back to this again, but we did get through quite a bit. All right, let's go back to the um.
I, I'm sorry, I just want to ask a sort of a housekeeping question.
Yeah, what do we do with all this?
Because we have been hanging on to these for a while. The ones that we have gone through, um, should we continue to hold on to them until we actually approve them? Okay.
What was the answer to that?
Yes.
Yes.
Makes sense.
From, from that page onward, please hang on to your notes.
But you're saying that from what we've done so far, you'll give us revised copies?
The ones we've already gone over.
And we don't need to keep the ones that we need that we've already gone over?
Although, if you don't keep the ones that you've gone over, then there's no assurance that the changes that you've requested have been incorporated. You have nothing to compare it to.
That's true.
Okay, so hold on to them. Okay, D three, um, report on the single plans for student achievement and board discussion of possible site presentations.
I gave you some heads-up information on this in terms of cabinet review of the single plans for student achievement, and the question remains as to what the board would like to hear or see, if anything, or whether board members would like to go to school campuses. Um, I'll let Robin go ahead and lead this discussion. Robin is our Associate Superintendent for Education.
Okay, well, that was a good intro, and the information's there, um, you can see the schedule. We're starting um, this week on our conference date to, to review um, the plans during our cabinet time. Um, and as Dr. Sarvis says, we will, we will be reviewing those, we will bring the plans for approval to the board. Um, the question is, do you want also another type of presentation? And you see the bullets down there where the board focus goals would be addressed, um, the principal would talk about, you know, important things at the school, and you'd have time to ask questions in a public forum.
So, would this be like one meeting or over the course of a year? Either way?
It probably could, if it were a regular meeting, of course, it couldn't be all together. We're talking, you know, twenty-one schools.
I mean, it would take.
It would take a long time.
But it, it could be, I mean, I guess you could do this one after another, have one evening set aside to do this, or?
Probably a whole series of meetings.
Right, a whole series.
I was wondering if we could maybe do kind of a hybrid of the two options. The options presented as somewhat as have the principals come and make a presentation, or have the board members just go to the school site. And I, I think that um, for the sake of time and to, to kind of streamline this, which was our original goal, what if we just did the first two bullets, which is have the principals make their presentation, and then board members can go to the school sites to address any questions that we may have of them?
Well, I feel like, if I may, that um, we, by reading their single plan, we can see the first uh, thing. My suggestion would be that we, when we review the single plans, that we review them in three, in three separate, you know, elementary, junior high, and high school, and ask principals to be here as we have read them, as we're having board discussion, if we have specific questions that come up as we're about to approve the plans, um, instead of them making a presentation, if there's things that we want clarified, um, that they're just, they're here, but they're not making a presentation unless we have a specific question.
So, we would approve them in those, at three different meetings?
Yes.
Elementary at one, or we could even split up, well, you, you know, if that's too many in one, then we could split up the elementary and then junior high and high school.
Yeah, I could go for that. That makes sense to me.
Dr. Noa?
I'm thinking, so we would, we would get rid of all the fluff.
We would get rid of all the fluff.
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
I like that. So, basically, they would come in and you, and it would be, how do you do? Welcome, I have a few questions.
Um, yeah, well, it could be. I don't even know that there needs to be a hello and how do you do, because I would assume it'd be part of a regular board meeting, or there'd be something.
Be polite. But I mean, I'm simply, I'm trying to, it's like, there would not be a presentation.
Exactly, so we could, we would have read through the single plans ahead as we always have, but this time would go straight to if we have questions or concerns instead of having the presentation.
Because we read the single plan in any event, so this, this only eliminates the presentation, yeah. Well, I certainly think that'd be an improvement over what we have. I, I like the, I rather like the idea of, of staff, uh, meeting them though, and, and out of the, out of the public eye, we're meeting when a board meeting, cameras on, right? Yeah. Uh, I rather like the idea that, of staff doing it and, uh, but I sort of want to look in. I mean, as I mentioned the other day, I'd, I'd love to see the DVD of it, because I, I'd like to see how, how the questioning went and how the answers went, and then I would like to ask some questions. Uh, but, but maybe then, I forget who suggested it, but then maybe it'd just be a matter of going to the campuses on a one-on-one basis. It's like, you know, I didn't think your question was, your answer to that question was very good, or I thought that was terrific, I'd like to learn more.
To be honest with you, those types of questions that would go on with staff are kinds of questions that are kind of on an ongoing basis. I mean, when we go out to schools, when we talk about the plans, when we're working on the site plans, and we're doing the data analysis, those types of questions or discussions happen all the time, but this would just be, you know, it'd be focused on the plan and really how are these activities funded by categorical monies gonna really move your school forward? And how are you gonna know, how are you gonna monitor, how are you gonna know it?
And what you're seeing in this, in your initial discussion with principals is their draft single plan, correct?
It's a draft.
So, presumably, they're taking your feedback and refining it, and then we would see the refined versions, and then?
That's correct. We've already, I've already reviewed the two that are gonna be up.
Well, I think about it, the, I hate reading those things, uh, and, and part of the reason is because so much is tabular, uh, and, uh, and you've got the goal, and then how we're gonna do this. It's a very tedious, very bureaucratic, uh, almost anti-intellectual way of getting at the point. And, 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 and I would much rather see, uh, I'd like to hear Dr. Sarvis asking them questions. Here's how you performed, uh, what do you, and here's your diagnosis of what, of what needs to be done, and here, and, and you're spending the money this way. How do you justify that? Uh, what's the case to be made? Why aren't you spending your money some other way? And, uh, and, and just come to the nub of it, rather than those horrible forms that, uh, that you folks have to fill out in the first place, and that we then have to wade through that are deadly. Love to get, to get to the meat of it without all that.
In, in a response shortly, um, the first couple pages of those plans, where they do the analysis, they look at the data, and they speak to what their analysis is, what teachers are saying, parents are saying, and what the data says, and then what we're gonna do about it. Those first few pages really have kind of more the narrative of what you're looking for. And then, then they're followed up by the goals and the measures and the tasks and the timeline, and who's responsible, and the money, and all of that.
And the, the budgets divided up a little here, a little there, and you can't, and it's, it's very hard.
Right, and I think you'll find them to be much more consistent in the form that they're using, because they're all using that online form this year, and so therefore they will look much more the same, worth, so we promise that every year, I know, but I think this year even, you'll see even more so.
And that's all, that, part of the information that it's provided, whether or not it's user-friendly or reader-friendly, it's required by ed code, right? It has to go in?
Right.
To the CD.
Exactly, we have to have that analysis, and we have to have, we're recommended to have SMART goals, and that's the way they're built.
Okay.
Okay, it's harder.
I'm just curious about the timeline. There'd be no, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, when the, the final single plan would be due, so presumably, there wouldn't be any kind of public, uh, meeting that could take place until the final single plans were due, correct?
Well, we could do it that way, or we could, when you see how they're scattered based on when they started and when the draft was due, it wouldn't fall out necessarily all elementary, all junior high, but they are in clusters. And we could, um, after the final was due on November third, for instance, for La Cumbre and Santa Barbara Junior High, we could have that take place at a meeting sooner, or put four together or something.
I guess in looking at this, it just seems like so, uh, and, and I know that in the past, we haven't done a final approval for, in some cases, until later, but it's been better, like last year, where we were doing them in October and November, and um, getting to it in January seems kind of late, so maybe it should be, instead of doing elementary all together and so on and so forth, but just doing them as they are, are ready, November third, and we could do.
So, if we have, uh, three elementaries, one junior high, and two high schools, bring that group forward.
Yeah, I don't know if that makes sense to other people to get the timeline done.
Yeah, you know, my only, my only request is not, not because I'm not willing to, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to participate in it, but um, it, it would be a bit of a crash course, um, for a new board member, and I think an excellent crash course. It would, it would provide a really wonderful, uh, learning curve from the get-go. So, I guess my only request would be that, uh, the decision will be made on November fourth, that we not schedule any of these things before November fourth, then the parties involved would know who they are, even though they wouldn't be seated until the middle of December.
I have, I have a, a suggestion, a personal plea, that everybody be required to write a two-page executive summary of the whole thing. The discipline of doing it would be very worthwhile, not to mention the, the, the help in reading it and getting a broad perspective.
How would that be different from that introductory text that we get?
Well, those introductory texts are all over the place, in terms of the extent to which they describe writ large, but as a massive document, uh, you know, and, and a massive document structured by, uh, some people who, who get paid to structure big documents, you know?
Well, maybe the idea then is to restructure the introduction to?
Yeah, that, yeah.
To provide a summary.
Yeah, I don't want these people to have to write a summary.
In, in essence, what does the plan do? It diagnoses problems, it says, here's where, here's the money we have to spend, here's how we're gonna spend it to solve the problem. I don't see why, uh, people can't be asked to stand back from what they're doing far enough to be able to condense that into a couple of pages. In fact, you know, maybe even one page, but, but I'd be, I'll, I'll be happy for two.
Um, could you, when you're doing your, when you review it with the principals, could that be part of your comments? Is this your, your summary, your narrative at the beginning, um, is it saying what the plan is? Is it being succinct? Is it addressing all those things? I mean, that seems like it could be part of your discussion, uh, when you're with the principals.
We can certainly do that. The two that we're going to be looking at do just that. They don't have the, the dollar figures in that cover thing, or that beginning part, but they have the, the pertinent data, and then they have what's it mean, what are we gonna do about it? And it is within one or two pages. We'll look at, as we look at these first two, we'll keep in mind that and make sure that that's what it looks like, kind of like an executive summary. At this point, I think if we said, let's do an executive summary, it would pretty much be exactly what those first two pages are.
Good.
Just, just a quick question. On some of the single plans from last year, they included a budget summary sheet, and some of them did not. If you could get a budget summary sheet with that two-page narrative, that would be extremely helpful.
And budget summary, you mean, we, we're getting this dollar amount from EIA?
A running total, rather than indicating that eight thousand dollars from EIA, EIA LEAP, and then that same eight thousand dollars is referenced on a different page. You don't know whether that's sixteen thousand dollars, or whether it's the same eight thousand dollars being used to cover two different bases. Do you see it?
Okay, I see what you mean, and the two that we have now have the summary at the end, they have the full amount. Um, what I'll need to make sure is that every dollar is accounted for, that those all add up to that final account, but they do have that.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, we have a consensus here, it sounds like. Okay, good. Okay, then we'll go on to D four, um, and this is just a, as you see here, a ten-minute item. We could obviously spend hours on our board focus goals, but the idea here is to sort of, just start us off, is that? Um, and we, it's been revised already, a little bit taking into consideration some of the ideas that people had, but also just asking the question, is there anything else?
Maybe I could introduce it. Uh, the board may recall that you took a stab at revising the board focus goals last spring. Uh, we know that timelines are always a problem. For instance, if we were to, uh, install new board focus goals right now, we already have plans that are addressing the old board focus goals. But the board did want to get on this early enough this year, so that we would have these well in place by the time we started our plans this spring, uh, building into next year. Um, the board at the time mapped out, uh, the basic areas. There were five areas, and there was a parking lot item, which was communication, and the board thought, well, you know, maybe we'll want to do something specifically in communication, or maybe we'll want to stay with these five areas. Uh, the board asked for some input, and we've been scrambling with, uh, and dealing with how to make these more measurable, uh, but we have our initial ideas included here. Uh, there is no intention of, uh, railroading this process. Uh, the board should take this, uh, based on, on the intention that, uh, staff did provide some input, but we'd like to now hear from the board, to hear your comments about it, and we'd like you to study this and, and probably not even tonight, uh, you know, go over a more lengthy discussion about what should be included, what shouldn't be included, whether some of these are just not measurable, uh, what kinds of indicators we could use, uh, so that we can help along that process, help that process along, excuse me.
Ms. Cordero.
Well, I actually had some suggestions, um, and so if it's okay, I'd like to put those out on the table tonight, so that we can discuss whether we want to include them or not. Um, first of all, in, under student achievement, the last bullet, increasing the number of students who are eligible for admission to higher education. Um, I wanted to add, and I'm, I, I didn't actually wordsmith the language, but I wanted to add the notion that when, that we had increased the overall number, but we also increased the number of underrepresented students who qualify.
Well, one is more generic than the other. Students is a superset, underrepresented is a subset.
Yes, I want to make sure we do both.
So, you want, you want both of them?
Yeah.
The number of students and underrepresented students.
Mm-hmm. And then under English learner, and to a certain extent, this was also true for special education, um, I was wondering if it is appropriate, I, I felt that it was appropriate, to include s- uh, goals that are not necessarily directed at our, um, state and federally required mandates, but for example, um, in, under English language learner, I wanted to have something like, um, that students would. um, that students would, you know, have full participation in school programs that are, because what I'm trying to get at is that the English language learner students aren't just sort of pigeonholed into, um, ELL courses and don't have access or participation in the rest of the campus offerings.
So beyond what, like the second bullet, which really speaks to the AMAO3, but to be proficient in grade level, but you're, you're meaning even beyond that?
Right. I'm meaning not test scores.
Okay.
I'm meaning actual participation.
Participation.
Yeah. And in special education, it seems like all three of our bullets focused on what we will be providing and not what we hope, what we are actually hoping for the students.
So just kind of explain a little bit more about if we have a, if we achieve a designation of meets requirements, what does that mean for students then? Just be more explicit there?
Yes. Yes. So what are we, what is our goal for the students?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mrs. Cordaro, the latter too, our, our inputs are not outcomes. And I think this would be more opportunistic, that's a public focus goal, particularly. I'm saying how to do it, do it.
Then under four, um, we, we're listing, every school will implement and fully participate in the following focus areas. One of the areas I would like, I wanted to add is culturally proficient instruction.
What's that mean?
Um, there's a, there's a continuum of what, and actually, uh, Robin is the one who, who led a workshop on this topic, so she could certainly be in a good position to explain it, but there's a continuum, um, in terms of how people deal with issues of diversity, culture, different cultures and whether it's, there's, culturally proficient basically means that you are aware, you're, um, sensitive, you take into account the different cultures, that the instruction sort of models, um, various, uh, modalities, delivery systems, et cetera. Um, and, and as I said, Ms. Swasky has a, a lengthy and, and much clearer definition than I just gave you. Um, but that's the idea behind it. It's not a program, it's an approach. Okay? And then in five, I just had one in terms of how we ensure the communication of our, our information. I wanted to make sure that the budget information, I, we could either add it to the third bullet or make it a separate bullet or however we want to do it, but I wanted to make sure that our budget information is available in Spanish, 'cause that's been an ongoing concern.
You mean that our full budget report is translated?
Well, when it said, because one of the things it says is we're ensuring fiscal transparency by communicating financial information effectively to the public. One of the ways we communicate effectively with our public is by doing it in Spanish. So, um, to the extent that it seems necessary and appropriate, I, I don't want to designate which items have to be completely or partially available, but I do think that needs to be part of what we consider as our effective communication with the public.
We can certainly grapple with that.
Yeah.
Rather than, I, I hope we're, it would be, thank you. It would be wonderful for each of us to do this, but I'm afraid we don't really have the time today and I was just wondering if there's any other kind of, rather than within these, is there any other bigger, um, things that anyone wants to add? For example, do we want to have another category that's something about prevention of gangs or tying students, I like to say it more, maybe a little, a different way, but tying students to schools in some ways through.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I, do we don't have time?
Engagement.
We don't, but that's a good idea.
I think we would all like to, to.
Talk about it.
To be able to do the same thing Mrs. Cordaro did.
Yeah, I know.
And down the list. We don't have time for that?
Um, not really tonight, it was really just a 10-minute thing and I didn't, yeah, no, that, we're obviously coming back.
Before we lock into any particular set of things, I think we all would like to be heard.
And I want it, I wish we could, maybe we could go down the line a little bit, I, like I just did, spend a few minutes and if you have some bigger ideas that you want to.
I have a little idea.
Tell us a little idea then.
Uh, the first bullet, understood and achievement, accountability goals including similar school score ranks of eight or higher. I want to, I'd like to insert one word and that is subgroup similar school ranks of eight or higher.
What, the similar school ranks, it takes subgroups into account.
Hmm? What?
I'm not sure what you mean because the, you get a similar school rank.
Uh, Bob, I don't believe at this point they're publishing similar school ranks.
Well, they're very, they're very easy to compute.
Subgroups, uh, for eight or higher.
Five minutes. Five minutes.
I'll check into that.
Ms. Harder, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I, I just want to offer an overall comment and, and actually I'm, I'm the one who has this communication piece hanging out there. I was the one who brought up the suggestion and, and I have some, some wording that I could propose, but I'm getting, uh, concerned about the length of our board focus goals. I think it's a fantastic document, you know, I, I think all of the suggestions that people are making are great ones, but I'm really worried about the length and, you know, the, the longer it gets, the more difficult it is to keep a focus on, on, on.
Longer focus.
You know, what we've, what we've enumerated and I would, uh, like to, to ask my fellow board members, when we come back to reconsider these, if we wouldn't also look at it in terms of trying to streamline the document.
Is it possible to have ongoing goals that are always going to be kind of always present and then other goals that are more yearly?
Yeah. I, I think that the ongoing goals are really like our strategic plan and this I really think should say Board of Education annual focus goals. I think none of us has any faith that it will be annual because it hasn't been annual and so it's hard to take anything out of this, but it is getting too long and we need to really think what are our priorities and what are we going to be doing this year? Or not, actually, it's not for this year at this point, it's for '09-10. So we need to be thinking ahead, what are going to be our goals for '09-10? Um, but I absolutely agree with Mrs. Harder that these are getting, they're getting long and they're not going to be referred to. Um, I think we need to shorten it and target and really what are our priorities for next year? Um, and as much as possible, I think that they need to be measurable.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, I have a file called Board Focus Goals in my desk at home and here are the board focus goals for 2002. I'll turn it to the audience just because it's a relatively short document. And then I have scribbling all over it. The next, next time we revisited it was diplomatically dated '03-04, so clearly there was, the gap was getting longer between one year and the next, but the document stayed relatively short. These are our '06 goals. They don't go over to the other side of the page, but they reach the bottom of the page and that print is getting dense.
Resqueezed.
And now we revisited them in '08-09, so, clearly the longer the document gets, yeah, the, the longer a period of time it takes for us to revisit it as well, so.
Okay. We'll see this again unless, did everybody, yeah. Okay, so we're, um, we have a break here, um, but I just assume if you don't mind, we can take a break in between before we go to closed session, so if we could just finish up, is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, I heard one, yes. Um, a return to consent items and the first consent item is mine, which was, uh, B1, which is the minutes and first of all, we have a, we have an issue because some people were absent, but also I had some changes to the minutes, if that, let's see what we've got here. Um, on page, uh, the first minutes of, um, what is this date? July 8th, on page five of six, um, it says in the middle of the page, um, "There was consensus among board members that an IB program for Harding Elementary School may not be the way to go." I want to change that. "There was some concern among board members that an IB program may not be the way to go." I don't know that there was a consensus.
I, yeah, I don't even know that that was, that the IB not be the way to go would be to put it at all.
Oh, yeah.
I'd say it was more like their, uh, board members had more questions and requested input from the Elementary Principals Council.
Yeah. Okay, I like that change as well. Okay, so with that change in mind, do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve with the changes.
Okay.
Second?
Um, Dr. Noel, you were absent, so you can't vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And I am with one, how do you say that? Abstain, I guess. So it's four with Dr. Noel abstaining. Now, in the second group, we have, um, there's a, let's see, a couple of things here. Oh, this five of five, this little public comment at the top, I believe that goes with, oh, um, F2. I think they were, those two were public comment on F2, does that sound correct? It wasn't on F3, was it?
As I recall, Mrs. Renaud was not here, but we did have people who wanted to make public comments and we allowed them to make comments.
So those two comments should be moved to underneath F2. F2 or F3?
F2, I think. Well, F2 says request to address the board.
On the personnel.
Yeah, and remember she was not here, but we had speakers on it and so they spoke to F3 even though there, there was no discussion.
I thought it was F2.
I thought they were addressing F2, yeah.
I think that their speaker slip said F3, but I can't remember.
Why don't we have someone go back and look at the videotape and come back with a revised amendment?
We can pull the speaker slips and find out.
Do we, can we vote on that or do we have to wait?
I think we have to wait.
Okay. The other ones that were pulled were yours, Dr. Noel, which was, um.
Eight.
Eight.
B8. Um, I had, I had, wanted to, this is about a, a grant proposal from the, uh, MADE Academy at Santa Barbara High School and I had to ask for, uh, information from the school about this and didn't get it in time, uh, to inform myself for this vote, but subsequently learned from, um, Ms. Sawasky that, that it's moot because this proposal was submitted to the State Department of Education, uh, several days ago. How long ago, Ms. Sawasky?
Well, it came in the day before it was to be mailed. I believe it came in on the 24th. I signed it on the 24th. We put it in the mail, oh, excuse me, to deliver it or postmark it on the 24th. I signed it and put it in the mail that day. If you do not approve it, then we will deny the funds.
Well, I move to deny it then. Uh, I, I don't, I just, as a matter of principle, for this district to submit proposals to the State Department of Education, uh, that require board approval, to submit them several days before the board has even met on them, I just don't think that's a very good way to do business.
We have registered that and, and given a directive to the, both the academy director in this case and to the principal.
Yeah, well, I move to deny this, to, to with, I move to withdraw this proposal from the State Department of Education.
Is there a second? No. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's passes four, one.
But, but I want to note that, that Dr. Noel is right. As a matter of practice, this is not good practice.
Yes.
Right.
Although we do have a chance.
I mean, there, there, there are a lot of issues about this proposal and, uh, and they were not discussed before the proposal went out and, uh, it's not, it's not a technicality, it's not just saying, oh, you didn't come to the board and get approval. There were substantive and substantial issues about this proposal and they did not get a, get a hearing.
Once this, uh, if, if this is successful and is funded, does the board then get another? No.
No, if this is successful at the state level, then we would take the funds. We'd take the $50,000 and the, the $50,000 would be spent in ways.
I don't understand why you would sign this, Dr. Sarvis. You, you signed it and you knew it hadn't been approved by the board. I don't quite understand that logic.
Well, I assigned.
Do you not, do you not wait for your board to, for things that require board approval?
I signed it fully knowing that it was due immediately and rather than deny the $50,000 to the school if it was successful at the state, I signed it on your behalf and frankly, I was thinking that you would approve it. You may have difficulties with some elements of it, but that you would approve it. Uh, we also issued a clear directive.
Why do we have anything on our agenda if you're, if you're, if you're.
Well, we do have it on our agenda.
If you're guessing our, our behavior and going out and signing things, then let's just adjourn and go home and watch television. It doesn't make any sense. What, what is, what is, what is governance all about? What does it mean to have an elected body that hires a superintendent to whom the superintendent is responsible?
Well, Bob, they're, they're a number.
Can I interject?
Not Bob, I'm Dr. Noel, even when you're angry at me, okay?
Can I interject, please, Dr. Noel?
Yes.
Um, I, I don't want us to get too far afield in debating this issue because, uh, I think if there's a concern about what the, what process was followed, then that can either be put on the agenda for full discussion or it can be handled between the individuals involved. We've already taken a, action on this item and I think we should move on to our next item and, as I said, if, if there's more that needs to be discussed about this, it can either be agendized for the discussion or it can be handled between the individuals.
Thank you. The B11, that's yours also.
That was me also. That was I also. I just wanted to get a, a figure on this. How large is this unfunded liability?
We do not know yet. We have a study being conducted and, uh, I asked for an update. Uh, I don't have the updated due date. I will get that to you.
Yeah, I, I would rather personally, uh, not vote on this until we hear the, the amount. Could this be withdrawn and brought back?
Oh, it could certainly be withdrawn.
Ms. Harder, did you have something to say?
No, I, just that if Dr. Noel was going to put it in the form of a motion, I was going to second it.
Oh, yeah.
Or we can just pull it.
Okay, let's just pull it.
I would recommend that you act on it anyway.
Well, I'll put it in the form of, I will put it in the form of a motion that, that we, that we withdraw it until we get the amount.
Um, and I'll second. And actually, could we just put it back on another consent agenda with the amount connected to it?
Dr. Sarvis, you were about to say that you, um, you think we should approve it as is?
I don't think it's a liability, the school, uh, the school district should stand in the future. Uh, my intention all along was to get the study completed and bring this forward. It has taken so long to get the study completed that in my frustration, I asked that this be brought forward right away. I'm concerned that we'll get to January again and we won't have the study completed.
I could see where we're hiring people, you'd want to know this, um, well before January 1st to tell people that you're hiring.
Well, it would be effective January 1st anyway. Um, if it could at least be an estimate, uh, that comes back to us, uh, we have a little bit of time, so, and, and if there's a problem with it, then Mr. Smith can let us know.
There's a motion and a second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
This, excuse me, I'm now, the, the motion was to postpone it, is that right?
Yes.
Um, any opposed? Uh, uh, yeah, no. I'm so confused. So it's four, four, one against, that's myself.
I don't, did you vote?
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You voted, okay. All right, and then, um, number 16.
Yeah, that was I also. Uh, this, this is the policy about a, an audit committee and as I, I, I was not here of the meeting in which this was discussed and I apologize for that. The, uh, but as I look at this, it's, it's an absolute puzzlement to me. Um, we, I've been on the board for 10 years and I have never, uh, heard anyone say that our problem was that no one was auditing the auditor. Uh, no one. No one was, there were no guardians for the auditor. The auditor, the auditor's report.
Where do you see that?
Pardon me?
You said, you see that in here? I'm just.
No, no, I'm, I'm reacting to the ideas. The essence of this proposal is that the audit committee will watch out, will watch the auditor, the ones we hire, the professional auditing firms. And, and my, and my point is simply that, that where we've run into trouble is not that our auditors have done a bad job, but that our accounting office has done a bad job. It's the accounting office that made $5 million mistakes, that put us in a position where we had to cut the budget. And then later, we were told that we had the money, and then we spent some of it, and then we were told we didn't have the money. That, that, in my view, what the audit committee is about, is about looking at what's going on, is auditing what's going on on a, on a regular basis in the district and alerting the board to that. And this, this structure doesn't do that at all.
Well, maybe we should bring this back with Mr. Smith to discuss this. So we can bring it back on.
We'd be happy to bring it back.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Like, the twelfth time is the charm.
But I would like to just add something to that discussion, because it was, I wasn't a big fan of establishing an audit committee when we started. And I thought the purpose of the audit committee was to overs, was to sort of review. I thought all along that had been your request, was that somebody audit, to oversee the auditors. If the, if the purpose of the committee is going to change substantially, which I think that would be a substantive change, I would prefer to see it not in our consent agenda.
Exactly, exactly.
Oh, yes, yes, I agree, Paul Hardley.
I, I agree too, I didn't mean to imply. Okay, there we all, I think that was all the, the items. So we're now, coming events, we've gone through. Any other board comments or correspondence? Future agenda items? I picked up one today. What was that? The D policy.
I have, I have a future agenda item, it's, Madam President.
Please.
I would like to, to have the development of a youth violence and gang prevention program put on our agenda, apropos of, kind of in the, in the light of the language of Mrs. Harder's motion last time.
So you mean the steering committee that Mrs. Harder referred to?
To start the discussion about, and not, but I, I think it ought to be at the board level before it goes to a committee, and, and appointing the committee.
Did I get that right? Development of a youth violence proposal?
Prevention.
Prevention.
Capital P, prevention.
So youth violence prevention steering committee?
Discussions.
Discussion.
Okay. Youth violence prevention, you know, toward a plan.
Okay, I think so. All right, any other agenda items? Nope. Public comment related, we're so not used to doing it this way. Public comment related to closed session items, do we have anything? No. Then we are now going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you.